To start with the Aboriginal acknowledgement, we would like to acknowledge the land of which we gathered is the traditional territory of the Tenaha, Siliks, and Senics peoples, and is home to Metis and many diverse Aboriginal persons. We honour their connection to the land and rivers and respect the importance of the environment to our strength as a community. And with that, I'd ask if there's any late items. A motion to adopt the minutes from the previous meeting of the 20 Committee of the, sorry, September 28th. Moved by Consul Renwick, seconded by Consul Page, all in favour. Thank you very much. And the next piece is the adoption of the agenda, which we will do right now. Move in a second, Consul Renwick, Consul Page, all in favour. Kerry, thank you very much. Public participation, we're back to that. And I don't see anybody in the audience. Okay, there are none. Presentations and delegations, and the first one is an update on the Cottonwood Park. And I think Sebastian, you're doing that.
Yep.
Yeah, so you might have to run it from urine, because I...
Is it spinning now?
It's spinning.
We used to know how to do this before Covid shut us down, and now we're...
You've got a lot of systems happening.
You got it?
Well, it's thinking.
It looks good so far.
So I tried to log in with my own personal login, because the other one wasn't working, so is that gonna be?
Download your preferences, which is about a two-hour process.
Consul Page, your chance for you to make a few bucks on the side, get this...
I'll show you how it's done. Could you shut it down and reboot it?
Tell me $50, please.
Kevin, send the bill to you.
Unplug it, unplug it back in again.
$80, please.
That'll be $85, yeah.
Oh, it's coming on.
Okay, do exactly what I say. Run while your computer...
Yeah, it's gonna try to upload all these preferences and that.
You can leave it wetters for a week.
I found it running, though.
He logged in as himself.
When?
You should restart it, hard breathe.
No, no, it's me, I'm working, I'm running it for a year.
Oh, it's yours.
It's the presenter, it's, so it should be good. However, it's not.
Yeah, maybe we should try to reboot it.
Can I, can I plug my computer to this?
I don't know, hang on a sec.
Should be able to, on the VGA there.
Let me come over there.
Unless we flip items?
Yeah, we could...
Could put Tom up there?
Maybe just initial the top.
We could put Tom up there, he's got, yeah, he's, Tom does it the old-fashioned way.
Jesse.
We'll just look great at you!
Shows up and sheet a few notes there.
You're talking to me?
I hope, Consul Renwick, you're not going over to try and fix that, I hope.
It wasn't... You know, like, everyone just laughs. I know, like, I'm...
Don't hurt your feelings or anything like that, it's like...
Can I just disconnect this and you do it directly from yours?
No, because it's on this computer, it's not on my computer. But I think, okay. Just started.
Yeah. Don't log in as yourself, is there like a, like a...
It should be...
Like a...
Yeah.
Big hope it's fair.
Okay.
I mean, it was like this thing where they're doing it. I know, it's, it's... You don't think business research is confidential, or perhaps it's all...
Well, I think I need to come in and get stuff to teach me a little bit of it, of that Microsoft Teams, because the MRBT, that new trustee board I'm on, for the municipal retirees, for their trust, everything is on Microsoft Teams, right? So I've got all these SharePoint documents, and I can't, I'm, I'm, I'm there, but it's like, okay, I don't know how to get the documents, I don't know how to find the documents, it's like, you know, there's just another system of... There should be some rule that says that everybody has to be on the same page for those things.
Microsoft is trying to...
Well, and then the thing is too, is that I'm, I'm just using the pad, and it's not, Teams isn't really, you need to have a proper...
No. Microsoft and Apple's not really all that compatible?
No.
Sorry, we just have to do a little Windows updates now?
We get a nice...
That's okay, thanks Keith.
We get a nice statement for this, but...
Should we have Tom do his presentation?
Well, I thought so, yeah.
And then we can...
You guys can...
I don't know which...
He'll do it.
He'll just stand here in the middle?
Just take him standing in the middle.
I can, I can move this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna change up the agenda a little bit here, because we had a few technical difficulties, and we're gonna bring up Tom Thompson from the Chamber of Commerce, and he's gonna give us an update.
No tech, Tom?
No tech, low tech.
Low tech, low tech, Tom?
Low tech.
Low tech.
Ah, thank you for inviting me, you're allowing me to be here, Mayor and Council. I was really just coming to mostly just talk about the temporary patio bylaw and the opportunity perhaps to get that extended into 2022. We can talk a little bit about businesses right now and how they're doing, we just had our Economic Development Strategic Planning Session, and we had one of the BC Chamber pulse checks that was done, and I'll do that briefly while the Windows downloads. But the impact on Kootenay businesses on the last pulse check showed that about 21%, which is better than it had been, reported that they're in poor shape, or in very poor shape, so less than 25%, which is a good thing. 77% reported increased operating costs during the course of the last year, 52% reported decreased sales volume, and 42% reported reduced staff hours. So things are not great, but they're, they're getting better. Very good shape, I think about 15% in good shape, 35%. So people were feeling pretty confident in the Kootenay region, but there's still a problem with rehiring workforce, labor still seems to be a problem, you've heard a lot of that on the news. It's not just happening here in Nelson, it's happening right around British Columbia, and really right across the country, and down in the United States as well. So an issue for sure for people like Whitewater, and some of the people in the service industry, the restaurants and food and beverage, and people that are trying to rehire. If you look at a place like Whitewater, and, and then some of the other larger resorts, we had a Kootenay Roundtable recently with some of our other compatriots, and then we also had Whistler involved in another one that we were talking about, but places like Whistler and Fernie, they do about 35% of their workforce is immigrants, and they're usually English, Australian, or New Zealand, and there's been a real problem trying to get those folks back into the country, if they're not here already. And they're not necessarily looking for a long-term permanent residency, they're looking for a two-year work permit, and if they can't get that two-year work permit, places like Nelson, and Fernie, and Whistler, and some of the other resorts really are gonna be struggling a lot. 35% is a huge amount to try to make up, and I think Whitewater is doing their best to try to hire as many locals as they can, but I think there's gonna be some stress up them, for them for sure. Darren is our Business Recovery Advisor, he was hired by the Chamber back in the end of May, beginning of June, he's been out talking to a lot of different sectors, and we could probably ask Darren to comment on a few things if you've got any questions down the road, but he's just here basically to say, like, he's been out, he's doing face-to-face knocking on doors, getting the information, and there still seems to be some concerns in the community. Labor is definitely one, food and beverage, arts, and anything to do with capacity is still an issue. If you noticed, on the 25th of this month, just the beginning of this week, other parts of the province were allowed to go back to fuller capacity, so places like the Rogers Arena, and Vancouver, and Football Stadium, they're all able to go full capacity now with proper COVID protocols. Restaurants, theaters, places like that down in the lower mainland were able to do that. Interior health is still an issue, and some of it has to do with our low vaccination rates. We're doing it way better than we were at the beginning of the summer. I think the Vax and Relax contest was really quite helpful, it got more people out and, and spurred them into getting their vaccinations, but we're still, I think, 78% with one dose, and I think that's not quite high enough, we still need to go higher, but we, I think we started that, Kevin, maybe around 68% or just below 70 anyway. So it's coming up, and I think the vaccine, mandatory vaccine, is probably helping in some sectors, and getting people to get back up and getting vaccinated, so they can get back into the workforce. I've got some personal people that I know in Kelowna that were in the healthcare industry that were holding out, but when they knew that they had to get it on a certain date, they finally did, even though they were very much opposed to getting it. So I think the vaccinations are continuing to come along, and we as an organization and other business organizations around the province will continue to talk to the province, talk to interior health, see if we can get some of these capacity limits starting to be lifted if our numbers get better. We don't want to wait too long, because as you start going further into the season, it starts becoming even more problematic for the businesses. So it's not happening yet, we hope that it happens soon, but I think that there's still some issues that we should be concerned about. In that BC pulse check that we did, the one of the ones actually said that 80% of business owners indicated that they were vaccinated at that time, and that's from six or, six or eight weeks ago. So the business owners seem to be coming around, sometimes staffers or others are not necessarily jumping in. So getting up to 78% for first dose is impressive, but I think we still need to go more. With Darren's work, he found that business owners reported being aware of most of the COVID-19 supports, so we had a lot of collateral material that was built, taken around door-to-door, shared with people, here's how you can access this program, here's how you can access this program, what is it you need. And as we saw probably even at the beginning of the pandemic, after the first three months, we had what some called a K-type of a recession, so you've got some sectors that were doing this well, they're doing really well, construction and people in the building supply business, outdoor garden centers, outdoor sporting goods stores, bike stops, things like that, and then others were way down here. So some were doing well, some not so well, and I think that's probably still continuing. You see some of those sectors still firing on all cylinders, and some people saying, "I wonder if it's ever gonna slow down," because it almost needs to slow down in some of those sectors. But the ones that we're really concerned about is arts, culture, and heritage, and those are the ones that we're here mostly talking about right now. I think the Temporary Patio Bylaw was brought in, really good work by Council and Development Services, I remember working with Sebastian and Kevin and talking about the need for the, the original temporary bylaw to be expanded into the first year, and that was done quite easily, I think Council was very supportive. And then the second year, we all thought that we'd be done by the second year, and we weren't. So Council was again very good about extending it into 2021, and I think all of the businesses tended to have some pretty good, pretty good days on this, on the, on the patios, but I think I've seen every one of you probably, not necessarily with you, but I've seen you out on the patio enjoying yourself, and it's great. So I think we all enjoy the patios, we like to see the patios flourish. We know that there might be issues if you tried to make the Temporary Patio Bylaw a Permanent Patio Bylaw, because it starts changing liquor licensing, and rules and regulations, and square footages, and washrooms, and all of those other things, but on a temporary basis, we believe the Chamber is very much in support of trying to get that in for a second, for another year. We had a roundtable at the end of September, and Sebastian wasn't able to attend, but Kevin sat in on that meeting, and we had a number of people from the food and beverage sector, and also a few retailers that were part of that, and it went quite well, I think everybody was feeling fairly optimistic about moving forward, but they would like to see the patio still continuing. And then we did another short survey after that to try to capture a few more people, so it was just a two-question survey, one regarding commercial recycling, and another one regarding patios, and we got full 100%, and not small sample size, but 100% support for the temporary patios, and that included some retailers. So from our perspective of a Chamber, our Board of Directors and staff certainly are hopeful that Council would consider doing the Temporary Patio Bylaw for one more year, and if there's a reason why it wouldn't be, we could certainly sit and work with Development Services or Administration to see if there's an opportunity to find a common ground, to find out why we couldn't do it, or what we'd need to do to make that happen. So that's all I have, I don't have any long presentation like Sebastian.
Complicated, I mean.
I could have, I could have brought slides and everything else, but that's not what we're here for, I really just wanted to give you a brief update on the, on the business community, the need, we think, for the Temporary Patio Bylaw to be extended, and we would be happy to come back with Andrea and myself, and talk about the Economic Development Strategic Planning Session that we had in October, the beginning of October, at a later date, but those are just some of the real Reader's Digest versions of what happened at that, at that meeting.
Thanks, Tom. So before I go to Consul, Darren, is there anything you wanted to add to what Tom's mentioned already?
Well, if, I'm not sure if people...
If you do, you'd have to, you'd have to come up.
Well, in that case, no.
Okay, all right.
You can have my seat.
Yeah, slide up, get up here, get up here.
Yes. I'm not sure if people are aware of what exactly the economic recovery position entails, but it started in, in June, and since then, we've reached out to about 200 and some odd businesses personally, and the first and foremost thing we tried to do was get some feedback on which grants were working, and which programs were working, federal, provincial, and local levels. And essentially, the survey that we had put out was, I think it was filled out by roughly 50 people, the findings, everybody's pretty much up to speed on, labor's a, labor's a really big issue, so is immigration, the fact that we're not getting a lot of people here to, to fill all the jobs that need to be filled, the debt load is, is a real concern to a lot of folks, and then the way things went this summer, you know, climate change is a big global issue, the global issue obviously, that we can't do much about, but people are quite concerned about where the wildfire situation may be next year. So what we're doing, over the course, over the course of the last six months, my job has been to go out and again inventory the sort of concerns that businesses have, but on top of that, also do as much outreach as I can for the Chamber in regards to reminding people to get their vaccines, to wear their masks, trying to get them up to speed on how the vax, the vax passport is affecting them. And from, just starting the last couple of days, we're just pivoting the info to, to let people know that some of the big programs they've been relying on, like SERB and Qs, are all done, but they've since, now they've been flipped into programs that are gonna aim specifically at businesses that have been really brutally affected, those ones on the downward part of the K, and another program that's specifically gonna look at tourism and hospitality. We're also gonna have a look at, try and have, have a closer look at basically case studies of different sectors to see where they're at now, and where, where they're gonna be six months down the road. The gut feeling is amongst quite a few of the people you talk to is that once these, once these employment, the employment programs run out, like SERB, then everybody's just gonna come back to work, because what else are they gonna do? But that remains to be seen. So, yeah, the new collateral will be out here in about, about a week or two, and we'll start making the rounds again and see what people are thinking heading into the new year, but it does feel as though the business community feels that we're rounding a little bit of a curve, knock on wood.
Thanks, thanks very much, Darren.
Cheers.
Thank you. All right, we've got a couple of questions, thank you for Tom.
Can you be back up front?
Consul Page, yeah, please, and Consul Woodward.
Yeah, thanks for the update from the Chamber, and I see here on our report, we're referring this discussion on patios to our next regular meeting, so we'll have a fulsome discussion then. My question, as we move into the winter season, and as we do have some vaccination rates rise, have risen, and the community is starting to get that protection that we, we all want them to have, is thinking about the mental health aspect, thinking about the wellness of the community, thinking about opportunities to recreate, gather, and participate in COVID-safe, still understanding that we are entering the curve, we haven't, we're not exiting the curve in any sense, has the Chamber had discussions about events, things like Winterfest, things like the, the concerts we've had down, I think you guys had one recently, if I'm not correct, but like, are we putting up a slate of activities that we can pull off in a COVID-safe way, in compliance with the public health orders, so that our community can get out a little bit and, and not be so isolated? Because that's one of the manifesting issues I think we're seeing right now, is that isolation is really getting to people, and then we need opportunities for some fun.
Consul Page, I think the event that we had in the summer, the beginning of July, was a shred Kelly concert that Paul Heinrichs was coordinating, and he needed a space, and I said, "If we can do it safely, let's do it," and he limited it to 200 people, didn't tell anybody where the location was until one hour before the show, and then he texted everybody that had bought tickets, and they came down, it was almost like a rave, and there was 200, 220 people, there was a few people outside of the gate, but it actually worked out really well, and it was, it was great to see live music, and the band was extremely excited, they were crying actually, because there was people out there, out front, they were so happy to be back performing again.
I can imagine.
I didn't cry, but I definitely had fun, and we look forward to doing those again for next summer, you know, we did Thursday night socials two years ago, and we'd get as many as 500 people out to those events, and those were great. As far as events go, we're, we haven't talked to Nelson Kootenay Lake Tourism about a Winterfest event, but I think, you know, certainly we'd like to try to do something like that, but that's out of our control. We didn't do our gala again this year, it should have been coming up in about a week. There was just too much uncertainty, limits were still pretty restricted, and it just wasn't quite right to be able to do it. We are trying to plan, I've got, I've been in contact with Sean Traynor over at the Hume Hotel to do an event before Christmas, but do more of a business after business, and then instead of doing Business Excellence Awards, we'll do those maybe in the spring, but we wanna do a Business as Unusual type discussion. So what kind of stories have taken place, what kind of tears have people gone through, what kind of successes have people gone through? It hasn't been a usual year, so let's not celebrate Business Excellence, let's talk about Business as Unusual. So we're trying to do that probably the first week of December, and you guys will definitely all be invited, and we hope that you can all attend. It's really tricky trying to plan an event right now, because you plan and you do all of the work, and then we don't know if it's gonna get shut down, or something else happens, or a rise in COVID happens. So we're hopeful, and we will get back to doing regular monthly get-togethers, the social things, the getting together, as much as I used to say, oh, this is a real challenge to try to squeeze this in on a Thursday, it's, it's what I really miss, I'd love to be able to be back, back doing those, and having beer and chicken wings with people for an hour and a half, it'd be fun to do. It's fun to do it with two people, but it's better to do it with 50. So we look forward to doing that, and we hope that there'll be more events, and I think that we're closer, you know, we're closer to getting some of those things. There's a Harry Mangs concert on tonight at the, at the Capitol Theater, I'm not sure how many people are allowed to have in there, it might only be 100, but that'd be great to be at as well. So we wanna be able to see full theaters and full events and things going on down at the stage at Cottonwood and everything else, so we hope to see all of that.
Thanks, Tom. Consul Page, go ahead.
Just one supplemental.
Consul Lockenberger.
I really, I really hear you on, on the, the urge to get back to the public health orders that allow us to have big gatherings, but I also really wanna challenge you to take a message back to the Chamber, things like Blue Night, things like scattered venues, concerts that are spread out, let the venues take care of, of what they can do for capacity, but what kind of events can we do that can scatter across the downtown core, that are you leveraging what we have now, and what we can do now, but has, is a reason for people to come down, engage, doesn't necessarily have to have a ticket component tied to it, but something that the community can get excited for, for a Friday or Saturday night?
Yeah, I think there's some of that going on, just individual businesses, but we can try to stir the pot a little bit, to see if we can get some of those things happening in December, maybe November, December.
Yeah.
Consul Woodward, then Consul Lockenberger.
So, thank you, Tom. And I, I, you know, as you know from my past work, I, I used to organize very large events, and it totally breaks my heart that these things are not happening, and I, and I have noticed a change in our community, I have to say, I feel like there is this isolation factor that is, it is having effects, and that people are, you know, we just aren't out, we aren't, like, even doing this is kind of amazing. So I guess, I guess more of a comment, I just, instead of trying, I said, I'm worried people are trying to say, "Oh, wait, we just have to get back to what was," and we don't know if, when that will happen, so I kinda feel like there needs to be, we need to, we need to walk and chew gum at the same time, in the sense that we, we need to plan for when normalization happens again, but also plan for instability, which I think is kind of the name of the game these days. And I'm wondering, like, when you're out there and you're talking to businesses, do you feel like the business owners are, have that understanding that the instability may just be the new normal, and that, you know, adaptation has to happen continuously? Instead of hoping and hoping for that time when it's all gone, and we can all just, you know, throw our masks away, and it's all normal again, I just, I'm worried that people are, are just focused on that, and then it's, and then if it doesn't happen, it's, it's quite heartbreaking. So I'm wondering where you think we're at in terms of that?
Anecdotally, I think, personally, I'd love to just throw away masks and get back to doing exactly what we were doing before, and I was kinda hoping to do that here in the Council Chambers tonight, and Sarah stared me down, saying, "You have to put your mask back on," I'm going, "Really? Really? Like, everybody else has their mask off, but I'm just a delegation, so I guess I have to keep it on." So, no, we all wanna get back to being normal. There could come a point where in, in the new year, or sometime down into the spring, they say, "This is what it's at, folks, you're gonna get a booster shot every six months, you're gonna continue to do things, continue to wash your hands, do your sanitizing from time to time, but this is where we're at." There was a guy on Bill Maher a few weeks ago, his first name is Andrew, I can't remember his last name, but he was diagnosed with HIV 30 years ago, and he said it was a real horrible thing to have to be diagnosed with, and he's got a handful of pills that he takes every day, but he says, "You know what?" He said, "This is what normal is for me now, and I just have to get used to that being my normal." And that's what everybody else is soon gonna have to get to the point where they say, "This is our normal," and there may be some small outbreaks, we just don't want big outbreaks and massive outbreaks. I think we're teetering on the edge of that, I'm not sure if we're quite there yet, but there's a lot of people that are saying, "Look, it's the people that aren't vaccinated that are pissing us off, and we're the ones that, we need to get back to doing our stuff, and they can worry about not being vaccinated." And that's not necessarily a good thing to do, it's a little bit callous, but it's still, you know, we do have to get back to being somewhat normal, and hopefully we, you know, I, I feel relatively normal, I go out for dinner every Friday night, I have been all through the pandemic.
When did you actually become normal, Tom?
That's my new normal.
I just wanna say a supplemental, it's just, it's just, you know, Darren mentioned, you know, climate change, and the fire hasn't happened, and, you know, this could be fairly regular, and so I guess I'm just sort of, I just feel like, you know, as a community, we need to absorb that, and know that, you know, this instability is, I think is going to be fairly common, and so just like, trying to find roads to navigate through that, and be successful, and still have a, a great lively community, as Consul Page said, working within that system, but...
I think one of the best ways to try to get back to normal is to have an extended temporary patio season next year. Then we'll all be sitting on a patio and going, "Oh, this is fantastic, honey, we got a beer and some chicken wings," and everybody feels like it's almost normal.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Consul Lockenberger.
I can taste the beer already.
Consul Morrison.
So Tom, I'm interested in hearing about...
So Tom, I'm interested in hearing about the potential for regional collaborations, such that we reestablish the new normal as something that's more regional. And by that, I mean, like if we're looking at the resort municipalities in the Cootines, they're already starting to collaborate. There's a number of working groups of the resort municipality, communities focused on big systemic challenges like COVID, but also climate change. Like how collectively can we get together and support each other? And I guess in some ways it's about diversifying risk, but it's also recognizing opportunities that we can do as a region, given, you know, the new normal that we're, we're all moving towards. And I'm, I'm interested in hearing, and I know the strategy at the NAEDP just happened, but I'm interested in hearing more or seeing more focus on the opportunities therein. And that includes some of the new climate stuff, the, whether it be the, the new projects that are going to get funded. You know, the province just came up with its plan and a heavy commitment to electrification and, and other things. And that money is going to go to the regions that can spend it, right? They're, they're not, they, they have to spend a certain amount of money to hit those targets. So where are they going to spend it? Probably the lower mainland if the lower mainland gets its act together. Unless the Cootines can show that we can do something with this. And I think electrification is pretty interesting because if we can create a really viable, better electric transportation network between our communities, we become a better, stronger draw. But there's other things like that. And, and I'm bringing it up in relation to something that Counselor Page said about events. We have the AKBLG in Nelson next year, hopefully in person. And this might be a great opportunity because there's, as you know, there's so much about AKBLG as economic development and what we can do as a region in terms of regional economic development. Wouldn't it be great if the city sort of took the leadership, because it's, it's ours to lead, it's ours to design, working with the chamber, put together an event that's really inspiring and can seize on some of those opportunities that we have to bring Kimberly and, and, and Fernie into a regional economic hub that's totally moving into the, into the next new normal.
Yeah, I think Counselor Lockenburgh, it's certainly the Cootines is as organized from a chamber perspective as any region in the, in the province. We just recently had a, an event up in Ainsworth Hot Springs. We had 16 different chambers, 28 individuals, presidents and executive directors of chambers as far away as Big White, which is in the Boundary Country. We had the regional chamber in Boundary, but we also had all of the East Cootine and Revelstoke and Golden and Invermere and Fernie and Kimberly. And so it was a really good turnout and then great discussions. We talked about some of those ways of collaborating. Today, because I've, I'm, I should be at an Economic Development Practitioners Network meeting over in, uh, Invermere in the Columbia Valley today. So I said, oh no, I've got a presentation. I have to go to council, so I can't, can't do that. So we are quite organized and if you and some others have some pieces that you could pull together and say, look, what can we do? What kind of a program are you trying to do? Was it something to do with clean BC or a circular economy? We could probably be a host community for sure. I'm not the smartest guy to be able to pull it all together because I don't know all of the players. But if there's people around the table that have some suggestions as to who could possibly be a part of that, there's no reason why we couldn't help try to organize something like that. I just, I think it's great opportunities. One of the things that we really are talking about right now and certainly is climate change for sure, but it might be more forest mitigation and how we make sure that we're doing proper forest management over the next few years. And I think that'll be somewhat helpful. So that, those are talks that we're already talking about with other communities and seeing where, how can we build on that? If there is other things that you can identify as clean BC-ish or something that you say, this is the next thing that we should be focusing on. I'm sure that I can certainly be a part of it and see if we can pull something together here.
Well, that's excellent to hear. And I, and I would sort of point towards Counselor Page, who's on the board of the AKBLG. And, and that to me, the event of AKBLG in Nelson could be a, a focusing event for, for a group and for some of these ideas to generate so that we, we know that we want to deliver at least the framework for something at AKBLG. So I just want to make sure that that's highlighted, assuming that it happens in person.
Well.
Sorry.
I'll, I'll just touch on a few points here and I, I like the line of thinking, of course, um, the convention, the board will be in town this weekend and we're going to select our chair for the convention committee. It's probably going to fall to me because of course we'll be the host city. But the board also has a coordinator and sets out the focus of those conventions at its, at its, at its meetings. And so that's something I can have a discussion. We, we would not substantially be carrying the load. They're in previous iterations, the communities themselves, the host communities have taken a leadership role in running the convention. And for the sake of continuity and, and execution, the board, the, the organization itself has taken on that responsibility so that the, uh, the conventions can be pulled off in, in a coordinated fashion and, and have a seamless experience no matter what community you're in. So I think it's going to come down to what those discussions end up being for what the theme of the convention will be. And I think there's some opportunity there, some, just like we had that discussion at the Hydro meeting about having an intercity challenge and, and how we could frame that. And, and I think of course Nelson, everyone I think is quite excited and ready to come to a place like Nelson. We'll just have to see how far out of respiratory season we are come the date that's been selected and whether or not we want to have a discussion about moving that a little bit further into the, into the summer or towards the summer, just for safety. Because that is, unlike what I was saying earlier, that's an event that is hard to scatter. Blue Night, you can have across multiple venues, artwork, you can have across multiple venues, but like you can't have the AKL conference across multiple venues in a.
Imagine the fun they'd have on an expanded temporary patio if they were here in the springtime.
Well, if we would, if we would be into, if we'd be into expanding the patio over all of the, like 100, 100%, you've got me there already.
See why you have your job, Tom. Keep it on.
It's not that many years ago since you guys were here complaining about no parking downtown.
Oh, I don't know if I've ever done that. I've always thought, if, there's never been a, I always thought the parking problem is a good thing for downtown. You want to make sure there's lots of cars downtown because some communities don't have that at all.
I couldn't agree more. Tom, um, just to add, follow up on Counselor Lockenburgh. Uh, is, I just made a few notes while he was talking there and actually most of the pieces that he's talking about are actually already in place and it could probably be easily pulled off, Counselor Page. You know, a conference that was attaching itself with the premier announced yesterday and just the work that we're doing with Nelson Next and the EcoSave program. Because you have Columbia Power, Columbia Basin Trust is very much engaged, BC Hydro, Fortis. You know, a couple more, connecting the last mile for internet and so on. So there's, there's a lot of stuff happening currently in, in our area that it wouldn't be very, it wouldn't be very difficult to pull those players together to actually put a convention on that could be somewhat, I would suggest, a lot different than some of the ones we've had in the past. They would actually be looking into that future of where we are going with, you know. As an example, um, a few years back there, we got a report on traffic between our three communities, Trail, Nelson and Cassagare, and the volumes are almost the same going between all of them in the mornings and evenings. And you'd almost think that 50 mile corridor is, is ideally set for electric cars. You know, there's people driving, you know, cars back and forth from all of those communities. And you can just see in 10 years where, you know, that interaction is going to continue to build and the electrification of that corridor through there with better charging opportunities, et cetera, would be a prime example. You could link the same thing to Fernie, Cranbrook and Kimberly, the same, they're all within that sort of battery distance that is a comfort zone for those that, that would have an electric car. So I think you might be on to something there, Counselor Lockenburgh, and, and looking at the convention in a little bit different light from some of the traditional models that we've had in the past.
We'd be happy to work. And I'll say Darren would be also happy to do, do some, some lake work on that as well because he's a good guy and he's well connected and he's talking to a lot of people out there as well, so.
Especially if there's a patio.
Especially if there's a patio. He really enjoys sitting on the patios and talking to his clients. That's where his best thinking.
Counselor Morrison's up next. You got to keep in mind, there's a Canucks game tonight, so.
Flame's already won, it's okay.
We probably got the other report ready to go now, but, uh, so in, in, in support for you, Tom, it's interesting that you would come to talk about patios today. And as a past president, like Cal of the Chamber of Commerce, that we've often had to come and pitch about not using up all the parking spots. But I'll send you, I'll send you this thing that landed in my mailbox this morning, very timely. Time to kick parking panic to the curb. And so, um, the opening paragraph is just that, it's a op ed piece by Matt Elliott in the Toronto Star and that 75% of Toronto businesses surveyed by City Hall's Transportation Department would like to see curb lanes and parking used for restaurant patios. Only 7% of businesses wanted return on-street parking.
Wow.
So, um, so tomorrow, uh, the Executive Committee of the Toronto City Council is bringing forward to strike a report looking at extending their 2020, I don't know, they call it the Toronto Cal or they got some weird name for their patio program there, extending it into 2022. And in fact, and didn't come from me, looking at the potential of extending it permanently for the city of Toronto. So I'll send you the article.
That's good.
The rest of you as well. It was interesting. I, I still have to say, I'm one of those people that likes to park in front of the business.
A lot of people still do.
On, on Baker Street, but anyways, support for your, for your concept and.
So you could get Mike to drop you off in front of the restaurant and then you can, he can park three blocks away like I normally do with my family. But the other thing.
This article came into my box, so.
Well, thank you.
My other, if I may, um, mayor, um, shop local. I mean, it's, it's a phrase that we all use regularly, but talking about this idea of campaigns or things that are coming up. I do know that there's a, a couple of markets, uh, Christmas markets that are being scheduled. I know, talking to the vendors from the marketplace that some of them were, were going to be doing some stuff at the Rotten Gun Club. I know there's two of those coming up in November. But is there any discussion at the chamber about some kind of Christmas on Baker Street? I mean, we are allowed out now. I mean, I mean, obviously we can walk up and down the main street. Is there, is there any thought amongst the business community of doing, uh, lights in the windows, some kind of competition, some?
Yeah, there's definitely going to be something. We're going to, whether it's Christmas on Baker or it's just going to be more active, we're going to, we're definitely doing a heavy shop local campaign or think local first campaign that'll be kicking off in mid-November and running right through until hopefully into March. There's some funds available through the BC Chamber of Commerce that we'll be applying for. We're just on a webinar this morning, so that'll be an enhanced program that, bigger than what we normally do. Uh, there may be some events involved. I'm not normally an events guy. I don't necessarily pull the goats and things like that downtown. But if we can get that kind of stuff together and make that happen or partner with somebody else that can do it, we'll certainly do that. Uh, we've done chestnuts down there. We've done Santa Claus and things like that. So that will be happening for sure. And just one thing back on your patio situation, uh, Counselor Morrison, the provincial government actually also made their changes to their bylaws to say, your liquor license can now be, can now be used for a patio permanently. So they've made those changes. You can't change your square footage. So you have to reduce some space inside if you're going to have an outdoor patio. But it's been very well received in most communities with the patio. So the provincial government has recognized that. And municipalities can, have taken various ways of doing it. And I think the way that the city of Nelson has done it has been really effective. And if we can carry that on for 2022, that would be great.
Tom, thanks very much.
Yeah, I was trying to get back on topic.
It landed in your mailbox, so.
Thanks very much, Tom. Just a couple of things I wanted to say that Counselor Morrison can attest to this, that, you know, we spent a few years in the early days of council when the chamber was, you know, trying to get us on, on its feet and there was different groups in the town that were, had their own sort of organizations and so forth. And, and I have to say, it's been a pleasure, you know, Tom, the work that you've done as leading the chamber and the past presidents, we have a couple of them sitting here, they're members of the chamber, Counselor Renwick and Counselor Morrison. And the good work that's been done by the chamber in the last probably 15 years or, or so has made a huge difference. And the, and your ability to work with Sebastian and Kevin on our, on our plan during COVID has just been outstanding, Tom. And it's, it's just great that you're, that the chamber has sort of got to that point in the community where it, it has sort of raised this game to, to a point where you got real credibility, not only in Nelson, but in the surrounding area. And that's what I hear when I talk as an example to Mr. McCormick, the mayor of Kimberly. I just talked to him here not so long ago and, you know, you, you hear about the connection between the chambers, as you mentioned tonight, and the same with Trail, Cassagare and the surrounding area. Now, I noticed they're still cleaning up Ainsworth Hot Springs since you guys left. But still.
I think you were the last one in the pool.
Any truth to the rumor or not, that you and, you and Darren knocked on Backroads door more often than you knocked on the other business doors? Is that true or?
Darren was doing most of the door knocking. If you saw him down there, he wasn't telling me about that.
Anyway, Tom, thanks very much. I really appreciate your reports. And you're coming back with, uh, on the economic development pieces.
Uh, we haven't formally scheduled anything. I know that we usually do something in January and I was just.
Doctor Sarah, she'll hopefully be able to.
I was mentioning to Cal recently, I said, you know, he sat through the economic development planning session. Counselor Page was there as well. Said, can you imagine coming and trying to do that presentation in five minutes?
Yeah.
In our January presentations, it's almost impossible to try to boil it all down. So if we have an opportunity to have a more robust discussion, whether it's here or at a, just a workshop or something.
Well, thanks to yourself on the board and, uh, Tom, shop local.
Thank you.
On the patio.
On a patio.
On a patio.
Okay, so we're, yeah, Sebastian, you got moved down the ladder again, I hear. Yeah, so we're moving on to you, Colin, here with the transit report. Okay, you have the floor. So this is an update from Colin here on our latest meetings we've had on the transit. So, and we also have a resolution here tonight, a recommendation from the staff in this package. So, um.
So it's just a presentation for council because this is the cow. Is the individual from Watts Consulting, is Tanya on, on with us?
Yes, Tanya, are you going to share your screen and your presentation?
Yes, I will.
Okay, great.
And then I don't know if Seth, if you're also there? Sorry, apologize. Just from my RFD that we've got, Tanya, who's joining us from Watts Consulting. That's the firm that BC Transit and the city got together to work on some traffic engineering. And so she'll walk through, um, what the work they've done. And myself and Seth, who's right there is from BC Transit, and her will be able to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much for having us and just wanted to make sure that you can see my screen.
We can.
Perfect, thanks. Uh, so what we wanted to do today was follow on, um, the previous council resolution, which was to advance development of a business case in the 300 block of Victoria Street and C2 design, which we'll speak to in a second. To then work with BC Transit to address the stakeholder issues, complete pre-implementation work, including consultation and report back. And then noting that return, the project would return to council prior to signing a project agreement with BC Transit and present at that time the update, updated design options as applicable. So today, what we wanted to do was, um, present the revisions that have been made based on the previous feedback. Go through the follow-up stakeholder workshops that were done and some of the key themes that we heard from them. And then also wanted to highlight some of the items that are recommended for further exploration in the detailed design phase as the project moves forward and some of those next steps. So in terms of the feedback that was heard previously from stakeholders, was the desire to minimize impacts on existing commercial uses. So through that, the exchange option that was being moved forward, option C2, what it does is it clusters the transit uses on a portion of the block closest to Stanley Street. Another area was, there was a concern regarding where the public washroom was originally proposed for location and that location has now been moved to the other end of the block. And I'll show that in a second visually on their updated, uh, design. Uh, there was a concern regarding the loss of parking. So a lot of work was done to explore different options in terms of what parking could be located in the 200 block of Victoria through reconfiguration as well as other streets such as Cootine. And see if we could maximize the parking and look at other options there. And then finally, there was also a concern of loss of a loading zone. And so the loading zone was out of the potential for after-hours, short-term customer parking pickup and drop-off. So in terms of some of the, um, changes that were made to address past stakeholder feedback that was heard, one of it was clustering the bus. uh, one of it was, um, clustering the buses closer to Stanley, so that design already did that, but that was the one that was selected to go forward specifically for that reason. We also put the washroom here on the corner of Stanley and Victoria, uh, reclo- relocated it. Um, it is quite close now to where the buses are, which is handy for passengers who may be coming from locally but also on the regional runs, as well as closer to the library itself and, and the police station. We reconfigured the parking spaces on the corner of Cootney at Victoria, so they've been reinstated as they were before, um, with just minor adjustments to their configuration to bring them in alignment and make them consistent with others within the city. We, as I mentioned, we spent a lot of time, uh, with, in, in conversations as well with B.C. Transit and with, um, the city staff in terms of options for reconfiguring, uh, some of the parking on Victoria Street and Cootney, and so we were able to gain additional spaces um, in this option, so this option has five more spaces in it than was the, in the option that council previously saw. We also created a new loading zone in this area here, uh, which potentially could have, uh, after-hours short-term customer parking there as well. There's new curbing and opportunities for streetscape improvement, so you, you may recall that right now in this, uh, section of Victoria, the two-hundred block traffic operates in a one-way fashion, and, um, how that was done was in a, there's some, um, concrete blocks that are helping to kind of encourage drivers not to go the wrong way down that street. So with these changes, what it also enables is, uh, some beautification, some new curving, some more, um, space that could be used for pedestrian amenities, so could have benches there, could have more bike racks, and also just makes the crossing that much nicer and a little bit more accessible as well by just bringing that curb out as well as reinforcing the fact that it is a one-way street. And then some of the items that did come up as we were, um, sharing this version of the design most recently with stakeholders is just wanted to also highlight that there's no change to the current parking situation on the other side of Cootney Street, on that side of the block, so that is, would remain, uh, essentially as is today. And also, um, Colin had noted that, uh, Falls Street, there will be some improvements to that, um, roadway, and so through that process, there's also an opportunity to look at additional parking on that street as well. So, the image that I showed you was the one that was shared with, um, the stakeholders at their, um, at the meetings, um, and, uh, we did have some follow-up stakeholder workshops, um, that were held to show them the revisions that had been made, um, and ask for their further feedback and see what the other things that we should be looking at. So, those that participated were area property owners as well as business owners in the area. Um, there was also participation from other adjacent uses and organizations, so we had representation from both library staff and the chair from the chamber. We also had, uh, a participant, um, from the administrative children and family development, uh, on building nearby the site. Uh, and of course, at those meetings, we also had the project partner reps, so there was staff as well as elected officials from the city there. Uh, we had staff from B.C. Transit there and then staff from, um, my own firm, our own firm, Watts Consulting there as well. So, in terms of the format, there was two virtual workshops held, um, we had nine stakeholder participants at one, seven stakeholder participants at the other, and again, those are in addition to those other project partner representatives that were there, and of the above, there were two participants who attended both sessions. And then there was also some email correspondence and follow-up after the two workshops. So, some of the key themes that we did hear from the workshops was, uh, that in terms of the parking reconfiguration and the relocation of the washroom, uh, those were seen as an overall improvement, so, um, it's almost, they, they seemed to come up a little bit less, um, this time around, so it seemed like there was a lot of support for the move of the washroom and then the work that had been done to explore other options for parking. Having said that, and, and also hearing the discussion around parking before this delegation, um, there was still some concern from some of the, uh, stakeholder, uh, participants who were there in terms of just regarding overall parking impacts of the exchange and, and some of those changes and what they could mean to their, um, businesses or, or property. Um, but overall, um, I guess some appreciation still that there had been changes made to try to address that. Uh, another piece, I guess a key thing that came out, you know, in, from a number of the participants was just a really common desire to ensure that the space is safe, um, that it's vibrant, that it's diverse, that it continues to have the same sort of positive culture that, uh, the participants feel is there right now. There was a lot of specific questions around passenger amenities and their locations, so the types of shelters, um, that would be used here, where they would go, um, and kind of their configuration. Uh, there was also a desire to ensure that the space was accessible to people, um, all, all people and, um, and that there was also, it was a space that was welcoming for users, um, both transit and others in the area. And also, there was some questions around impact on the adjacent building programming, some of the residential properties that are on that block as well. And then a lot of the conversation, uh, at both meetings also was, uh, around the loading zone and that position and the size of the vehicles trying to access loading, uh, loading zones in, in the city in general, um, and where the location of that could be and the size of the trucks that were trying to get there and their impacts on the transit system, as well as, uh, some questions around, okay, well, what are the trade-offs to parking based on where that loading zone is? And also in terms of this mid-block crosswalk, so, uh, there was some, a fair amount of discussion about whether there may be an opportunity to, uh, retain the existing loading zone position closer to where it is right now, um, and then return that back to, uh, parking if possible. So, in terms of the recommended items for further exploration in the detailed design, um, there was, what we're recommending is that through that process, there be a detailed safety assessment of the crosswalk placement options and what their trade-offs are. Uh, so, some of the business owners in this area said that they would potentially welcome the loss of parking there if it meant that there was o- opportunity to potentially retain that loading zone there, but the trade-offs to that is whether there's opportunity to move crosswalk a little bit closer to the transit exchange, whether you need a crosswalk or perhaps some of the curbing tra- trade-offs, so whether potentially you need curbing, um, that's shown in this design and whether that might facilitate, um, some of those trade-offs to happen. So, as part of the detailed design, the recommendation is to see if there's an opportunity for an alternate approach to placement of the crosswalk, curbing to retain the loading, curbing to retain the loading zone closer to its existing location and what those parking trade-offs might be. And then the other piece that we're recommending be explored further through the next steps in the detailed design process is the types of shelters to be used and a detailed assessment of their placement, again, to make sure that, uh, we're not, um, impacting some of the uses in the library or across the street. And then the other pieces of it is that with implementation, that there's ongoing enforcement of parking and loading zone uh, use, uh, to make sure that the loading zones and parking spaces that are there are used as, um, I guess, suggested through the signage, and then also that there's an ongoing monitoring how the overall area is working and, uh, continue to make sure that it's a, uh, lovely space and a real asset to your community. So in terms of some of the next steps, uh, what those would be is to then advance the business case to submit an infrastructure grant funding application, and so that is something that B.C. Transit is now leading, and the target would be to do that, submit that application in late twenty-twenty-one. And then if it's successful, it would come back to council for final approval at that point, and then the project would move forward for detailed design, which potentially would be in late spring twenty-twenty-two, as well as then opportunity to provide, uh, project upgrades, uh, updates as the project progresses. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Um, Seth, did you have anything you wanted to add? Did not hear me? Seth, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Oh, thanks so much for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. We're excited about, uh, the conversations we've had with the community and, and certainly we've heard some, some key messages that Tanya outlined aloud and clear from, from the community and business owners, but we're confident that the exchange, uh, has, uh, has sort of the potential of, of a invigorated three-hundred block of Victoria Street, and we're excited about that, and we also, uh, will continue to incorporate the, the comments we've heard from the commu- from that community into the design, uh, detailed design as we move forward.
Thank you.
Can I just add? In terms of, you know, looking at, at that whole street, and I don't think it's just the three-hundred block, but it, the four-hundred block and maybe the two-hundred block as well, so I've been talking to Sebastian and Natalie and, um, you know, we want to look at, you know, this exchange and opportunity to really look at Victoria Street and see how we improve that, um, you know, that street, um, in, you know, in a broader context. We know if the, um, interior health project goes ahead, there, you know, there'll be, um, vacating the pink building there and, you know, you know, how, you know, should that use be something different than just strictly, um, public sector office buildings, you know, that main floor of that building is, is quite large. There's a nice, you know, um, patio area there, et cetera, so, so we do want to, from our end, uh, take this as a catalyst project to really up what, uh, you know, how Victoria fits in our downtown and how we, um, you know, use this as a, a legacy for, you know, for what the future looks like for that, so, um, so we'll piggyback alongside this and, and, um, you know, work with, with the, you know, the tenants and, you know, because we do see, you know, that, that could be a super really cool, uh, street. There's a lot of restaurants, et cetera, there. You know, there's the entertainment with the Capitol Theater, uh, so, and it's, you know, it's a block off Baker Street. How do we make all that work together?
And, and the alley's very developed as well.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of business in that alley through there, and plus you got that new building further down beside Yum-Sum.
Residential, yeah.
Residential is happening.
Yeah, so, yeah, from, yeah, you know, uh, Cootney School of the Arts all the way back, that could be a real gem for our, our community.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, any questions from council or any comments? Councillor Page and Councillor Woodward.
Thanks, guys. This, uh, we can really see the progression of this detailed design and the, the hard work that staff has put in, and I would really want to celebrate the tough conversations that you guys have had with, uh, the community in this area, trying to figure out what makes the most sense and how, what design elements we have. I heard mention of, and I, I would urge us to get a little bit more formal with the areas around bike parking. Uh, as someone who uses the areas, as we all do, uh, we don't have the same kind of large sidewalks we have on Baker Street, but if there is some idea that some of these, uh, curbside areas are able to accommodate some more, uh, convenient and, uh, usable bike parking, I think that's an area we want to kind of build out that capacity a little bit, um, for people who run down and grab a bite and run back off to wherever they're, they happen to be going, so that's one, that's the only thing. It's a very minor thing. I think you guys have gotten a lot of the big pieces in place, but a little bit more bike parking would be great.
Great suggestion, councillor Page, and the one thing too is that you'll, maybe if you won't remember, but up towards the end of where the library is, we were, okay, you knew about that one, and then adding the one at the other end there, possibly where the benches and bike parking at the other corner of Victoria and Cootney, but yes.
Great.
Certainly, yep.
Spoken by a true cyclist.
It's annoying.
Councillor Lockenburgh, oh, sorry, councillor Woodward.
I was just gonna say, um, so, d- does there need to be anything built in here for electrification of the transit system? Uh, or do you feel like this would just work fine as is?
Yeah, through, through you, Mayor, I'm happy to speak to that. Um, we continue to have conversations about electrification and our electrification requirements. Um, certainly, uh, we'd like to have some future capacity, but part of the, part of the truth is, we're not really there yet, and the other more significant piece is that we're really focusing our charging infrastructure at our, uh, end-of-day terminus locations, so where the, where the bus, buses are stored overnight for garages is where we want them to be, the, doing the lion's share of charging. Um, and there's not typically enough time and layover for them to, we don't want the buses sitting around for half an hour or more, and that's the amount of time we'd want them charging, so for those, uh, reasons, for variety of reasons, um, we're not engaging too much around, uh, charging at, at sort of, uh, interlined bus exchanges, but we are, uh, keeping the possibility open to it in the future, and, uh, if there might be an opportunity to put one charger in, uh, while we do the infrastructure, uh, we will, uh, incorporate that into detailed design.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Lockenburgh?
Yeah, i- interesting, councillor Woodward, you touched on something that I was gonna ask about as well, and, and that's more specifically around sort of the, um, demand pricing or surge, it's not really demand pricing, I guess, but the, the issue with charging around time of day and that, that those things do come into play, so just, if you haven't already done that work, then have a look at when the optimal time to charge is, because maybe it is during the day. I don't, I don't know. The other part of it too is, is that, um, getting to a hundred percent or getting to eighty percent, it's, as you probably know, it's, it's variable, like you can go from, say, twenty to forty faster than you can go from sixty to eighty. So, again, that midday charge to get you a quick little pop-up might be what's needed for, especially for some longer routes. I, I can see, you know, in time, the first buses will be local and probably fine, but in time, we may, we may need more than just, like, end-of-day charge, so, um, just want to put that in your-
It's a, it's a great point, uh, councillor Lockenburgh, and one of the things that I would also, as we look at the timeline for when we're building this, and we are talking about some of those conversations with B.C. Transit, they are trying to roll out their electrification, but as we go through detailed design, looking in that in the spring of twenty-twenty-two sort of timeframe, the likelihood of this sort of being on the ground, being built is likely even twenty-twenty-three, so that does even allow some more time as they work through what products going to work for charging and what infrastructure is needed and what we might need on that block, so there's some time here to, to, to work with that, but yes, those are all, uh, very things that we need to consider.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any further questions? Councillor Enwick?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, just a comment, I think, um, I, I took part in both the, the meetings and, uh, I, I heard the stakeholders, and I, I have to say, I, I appreciated what they had to say. They were concerned, but, uh, overall, for the best part, they were very respectful. They're concerned about their particular case, if you will. Um, but most of them are, are, seems like all of them, they like the idea. They like the idea, the concept. I don't think there was any way that I don't want this to happen here. So, it just, it was, it was great work that, that Tanya and your team have done and, and Sebastian and, and, and B.C. Transit, and, uh, hopefully, we can, you know, we can get some of these things like the, the crosswalk and, and the, the, uh, the loading zone figured out, and, you know, everybody will be, how to put it, relatively happy.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Anybody else hearing none? Thank you both very much. It was a pleasure to be on the call with you on the last couple of meetings, and thanks for your leadership and the way you were able to, you know, answer people's questions and, and, and listen to the concerns with compassion and come back with some, what I think are reasonable solutions to the questions that came up, and this is an exciting project and it's gonna be another step forward for our community and, and an upgrade to our, for our transit users. And at the end of the day, that's really what it's all about, is making it comfortable, making it simple, and making it regular for people to be able to take transit as the first option, not their last one. So, thank you both very much for your good work and call, and thank you for, for managing those meetings as well, and special thanks to Rick and those of you that sat in on, on the meetings. And with that, there's a, the, uh, recommendation is that the presentation, uh, tonight from B.C. Transit and Tanya will, of, of Watts Consulting, uh, group be received for information, and this sets us on a path to move on to the next steps, just so we're all clear on where we're going from here. It's not a stop, it's a advancement of the project. Uh, move receipts, somebody please, councillor Woodward and councillor Charles Wood, all in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
All right, and the next presentation shall be just as exciting as the last two, we hope. Get you wired up here, Sebastian. Sebastian, before you start, Kevin, uh, uh, thanks, Kevin, for touching on Victoria, because I've always felt Victoria was one of those kind of lost sort of orphaned streets, but yet, yet in all, lots going on on it, and, uh, you know, I know that the planning department keeps those kind of things in mind when you're-
Yeah.
Like when you look at Vernon, Baker, Heritage, Heritage Lane, or however you pronounce it properly, and then Victoria, those are key corridors in our downtown core really for business, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think we're fortunate that we don't have just one, one main street. We've, it, it really peters out and, and we've got some strong anchors with the coffee shops and the pizza shops that are really busy. So, yeah, the bones are there for sure. Yeah.
All right, my friend, you, you got it up and running. So, thank you.
Yeah, apologies. Completely my fault. I used the wrong login. So, um, yeah, so I was just hoping to give council a bit of an update on where we're at with Cottonwood Park upgrades. And at the same time, it's really about the Railtown Snap, so Sustainable Neighborhood Action Plan implementation. So we'll have a short presentation and just kind of go over some of the projects we're starting to tackle here. And, and, and these are identified in white here. And essentially, we'll focus on really the, the market precinct, I guess. And it's the area around the Cottonwood Falls and the market, of course. So as you, the first things that have happened are the two murals that have been painted in the area. So really, some big blank walls that were covered. So starts to, you know, kind of set the tone. The washroom facility is something we're looking at, bringing electrical to the stage and some lighting and some upgrades at the waterfall viewing and interpretive displays. As some of you may know, twenty twenty-one marks the hundred twenty-fifth year of the first hydro-generated power in, in the Kootenays. And it was located right there. So they've managed to find some old bits and pieces from that original equipment and they've installed it there. And the Izuzi, Izuzi Friendship Society is, is plugging away and creating a nice viewing area there. So it's, it's really coming together and then really enhancing the entrance to the park or one of the entrances, which is the, the parking area between the Rod and Gun Club and the auto body shop. So essentially, this is an aerial flown last spring. So it shows you the area that we're really starting to focus on. And the idea is to eventually bring it to something like this. And really it kind of creates a circulation network and really starts to create many development parcels within the park itself. It's not a big space and we've got beautiful Japanese garden, but we do have some key bits and pieces left that we really need to focus on and make sure that we, we really use those areas wisely. And ultimately, if you've been there when it's pretty busy during market, the market, and especially now with the bridge being closed, the circulation is not great. The entry points aren't obvious. And so, so we're trying to figure out overall, how do we make this area circulate better? So there's not a lot of time wasted with vehicles backing and coming. And I think if, if we could figure out the circulation a lot better, it would, it would avoid some of the, some of the congestion issues that we have currently. So some of the key projects that we're looking at, and we're just gonna locate them here. And this is the new washroom facility. And, and here's a, sorry, it's a black and white rendering, but so this, this washroom will be installed just kind of by the, the embankment and just as you come into the park. And we'll also have a concession stand. So we'll be able to use that for, for various events. So we're just about done with the design. We're hoping to bring that out to tender soon with a construction completion date by early spring of twenty twenty-two to be ready for the market season. The other big. It's been passed along to a few, by a few people, that's for sure. But we're guaranteed it's. Yeah, exactly. Guaranteed it's there in the spring. The, the Rod and Gun Club Parking Plaza is just highlighted in yellow here. And so this is what we see right now. It's not very formalized. Various businesses are using the area. And it is very much a gateway to our park. So we, we need to, you know, it was always part of the Railtown plan to, to create kind of a, they call it a parking plaza. So how do we go from that to something like this? And this is just a, it's just a draft at this point in time. We've been talking to the adjacent landowners and obviously parking is a premium here. There's different events happening. So we're working on squeezing as many parking as we can. But as you can see in this image, it really formalizes the parking, creates a loop circulation, more bike racks, opportunities for E V charging stations and a continuous sidewalk from Railway Street connecting to that pathway that leads to the Rosemont Tunnel and ultimately creating a safe environment for pedestrians to come in here. Because no matter what we do, we're talking about plus or minus five parking stalls. The key to this is going to be having people park throughout our downtown and walk that final five hundred meters or so through a proper path and proper safe, proper by being safe and, and convenient and efficient. So all of that is factored into this plan. And, you know, this is what we see today. And the idea is to eventually bring it to something like this, right? Add vegetation and, and multi-use and, and again, a, a proper circulation network. And other things that we're looking at as well is, you know, what opportunities do we have? And this is a sketch from the, that Railtown Sustainable Action Plan. And the idea was to create in the long term, transition this from, you know, mostly industrial use to mixed use community. And so what we, what we have to leverage as municipalities, we own land and council has given the go ahead to staff to sell the lands highlighted in yellow on the left-hand picture. And you know, the idea there was always to have multi-unit residential. So, you know, as a condition of sale, we will want to see that happen. So, so that's an opportunity that could start to really shift the focus of the area and start kind of transitioning it. And also we have the special study area, which is just current, well, actually where the old market stalls used to be. And roughly the same footprint as the Leaf Bottle Depot building, but could potentially accommodate a few more stories. And that was always slotted as a, or was slotted in the Railtown plan as, as a, a, a mixed use and special development area. And the idea here would be to accommodate residential, potential at ground, community use or commercial. And then essentially have eyes on the park at all time to really make it a, a safe and, and well-used area, because it's beautiful, but right now we, it, it's quite underutilized. It's mostly utilized during the, the markets. So this could create, start to create life in the area twenty-four seven. And, you know, what, what that could look like is, and here's the rendering, and we already have the oval. We'll have a washroom building, but the building is kind of something that could look like that and would have that laneway in between. So right now we're working with the local architectural firm to, to create a massing model of what that could actually, could actually look like. And once we have that, we'll present that to council and we'll have a, I've seen some drafts. So there's obviously variations in the design, more parking, less parking, more stories, less stories, two bedroom versus one bedroom versus bachelor. So, and how many floors do you want? So there's, there's all these options that we can look at. And, and then eventually the idea would be to, you know, take that land and bring it to, bring it to market for, for a project. So, so we're really starting to push implementation of this plan. And I think this area is an area where it's logical to start with. There is a park. There's already activity there. And it could really help transition. Some of these projects, so the parking plaza and the washroom facility and lighting and electric, electrical is, we've received grants from the province on that. So we're hoping to be able to cover that mostly via grant funding. So, and it is a hundred percent grant funding. So, so those are things that we're, we need to achieve in the next few years. So we'll be moving forward on these things. And we've started to consult with some of the affected landowners and trying to find ways to transition them. So essentially, we're, that's where we're at. We're going to be working on this for the next two years and, and we should be seeing some, some action here as soon as the, the spring of twenty twenty-two.
And can I just add, you know, a, a real shout out to the Izuzi Friendship Society, the work they've done in that park and especially on the Rod and Gun side or Rod and Gun side of the, creek there. It's, you know, that used to be just a no man's land. We used to have a hydro pole on the top of a big piece of dirt. And, and it's, you know, we hid or lost in the bush. There was, you know, the original foundations of the hydroelectric, you know, the first hydroelectric dam and, or power plant in B C. So some great heritage there. They also are working with the Touchstones and others on the signage to really celebrate, you know, that history and, in, in that area. So, yeah, it's like, if you haven't been down there lately, it's, it's fabulous of, of what they've done. And they're a really great partner.
Counselor Morrison?
Sorry, I think I missed it right at the very beginning when I was trying to bring it up because it's glare there and it's glare there. They're, they're great screens, but they're really hard to look at. So I was trying to get my pad working here. Are we fixing the bridge? Please tell me we're fixing the bridge before next market season.
That's in the back alley there, right?
I'll defer to.
In the back alley.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Please, please tell me that we're.
Yeah, it's not part of this grant. It's part of the, I know we looked at some options. None of them were, you know, too cheap, but, and then we think the staff member that was leading that left and, but it's, you know, definitely on our, on our work plan. And I will make sure that Colin Innes addresses that as, you know, when he's doing his budget and capital projects to, to council. So.
Yeah, because I, I agree with Counselor Morrison. It makes such a difference.
Oh, my gosh.
It does.
Traffic is so.
Yeah. You can see from, you know, the concept drawing, that's one of the key circulation quarters is down, down that lane.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think ultimately we need to also work on messaging what other parking areas are available so that we don't
Everybody doesn't.
jam people in there because it's, it's very limited and there's, there's not much room to expand on parking down there. So I think our real strategy is to kind of, yeah, kind of help people get close enough and, and, and then really kind of walk or recycle that last little bit. So, you know, more bike racks, better sidewalks, better, better information around, yeah, where can you park? And I think that would, would work as well. But yeah, the bridge is, is key for the circulation.
When you're working around a creek, it's not hard to spend a half a million on a bridge. That's the problem, right? Is you just don't go down there and throw a bridge in it. It's all done. You got fish habitat supposedly and that kinds of stuff. Counselor Morrison, you okay?
Yeah, no, that was just the, the one thing is that, that this summer it just seemed like that was, had that been, if they were to flow through, it would have been so much nicer than the chaos. And I have to say, they did a great job of controlling the traffic. The young man that was there all the time was doing a great job. And he was getting way out in front of it. Like, you know, you'd, he was almost at Nelson Ford saying, no, you're not going in there to park. You can go to the Rod and Gun Club or you can go back over, over there. I mean, it was, it was great, but it's also a bit frustrating because if you get caught in that line, it, it's pretty hard to actually turn around to exit the line before you even get to the parking. So.
Yeah, absolutely.
Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, anything that can be done to actually remove cars or to, to not have cars in this mix and just have people walking or maybe some kind of shuttle bus or, you know, just, because, yeah, the, it's just so tight, so tight down there. And there's just, because of the, what do you call that? The, the, where the highway is.
The bank.
The, the embankment. The interchange is just locked in. Yeah. So, yeah, any, anything that can be done that just makes it basically a pedestrian zone. Yeah. And, and also we are working on, we haven't gotten to it yet, but we're working with an engineering consultant on conceptual plans for Railway Street, which is also part of this plan. Right. Uh, so it's just on a different contract. So, so that will be looked at eventually, probably next year to just start to conceptually design it and start to engage some of the landowners and stakeholders in the area in terms of, yeah. And the idea is to make that a bit more friendly for, you know, they call it complete street so that, you know, many users can use it. And there might be options to really extend the trail and, and really connect a multi-use path from the corner Baker to the, to the park. So that would be just a better environment for pedestrians and cyclists to make it to the market and back without having to, to deal, you know, to get mixed into that traffic because it is, it's, it's going to remain a busy area for sure.
Thank you.
Sebastian, what, what's the, a couple of things in terms of that mixed use building? Is there any issues related to the flood? Danger of Cottonwood? What is that in consideration?
Yeah, yeah, that would all have to be looked at. Right now, like a, a massing study kind of looks at general setbacks and heights and things like that, but it, it looks at development constraints. And obviously being proximated to the creek, it's, yeah, we're going to have to factor that in in terms of potential for flooding and what goes on the ground floor. There, there could be uses that aren't.
They don't permit it. Okay.
Yeah.
But in general, there's nothing stopping related to the flooding for.
No, no, you just have to do, you know, your proper geotechnical work and perfect, have, you know, professional biologists involved if you're building within fifteen meters. And yeah, of course, getting the latest, you know, floodplain information.
Can I have a follow up just on that? Do we know, have we heard anything about the Nelson Leafs and their future plans? If they plan to stay, that's cool because I could see opportunities of developing some synergistic businesses in that area. But if they're not, it'd be interesting to know what, we don't know.
I know that they're, I know they're bursting at the seams.
Yeah, okay.
I do know that, that the whole recycling thing has just kept climbing and the, the, like this type of stuff here was more and more that you can deliver down there all the time, you know, the electronics. So it was at one point, you know, their building was pretty well filled with bottles and cans. And now a good third of it is used up for electronics. So they definitely need space. Counselor Feig?
I would be remiss if I did not bring up the discussion of the natural asset that is the creek itself. I was having a good conversation at the excursion over Touchstones with one of Ms. Lamb's descendants who works in urban design and has done detailed, a detailed thesis as part of his schoolwork on Cottonwood Creek and the opportunities to restore that. I know it's always been a passion of a lot of people in the community and a lot of former counselors. And I would just ask us and challenge us of how do we get to a place where we have a really strong environmental understanding of what the creek needs? I see within the planning for the active transportation and pedestrian area that there's at least some visioning of a walking trail along the creek. I know there's certainly challenges about how some of the properties bordering it would need to be moved. But I feel like we need to, we, we, we talk a lot up here about how a lot of this stuff is born from really good planning and how those foundations have been laid. And what I haven't seen in any of our planning is, is a plan for that creek and what that would look like. And over the course of the next fifty years, what concrete walls have to come down and when, as those opportunities come? And where would the walking trail go? And what are the phases? And what is, what would the biology need to bring back the, the spawning? We, we were sending a letter off about fish habitat. This used to be a very productive, a very robust spawning head for, for trap, or for the, the kokani. And I know the creek has certainly been redirected and we have challenges around CPR, but I really think we need to challenge ourselves and lay down a plan of what that does look like. So I don't know if we can refer it from here or we can leave that with staff, but I really think we should spend some money finding out what that creek needs over the course of the next eighty years, fifty years, thirty years. To be productive and be the gemstone of Railtown that it could be on top of just the railway.
Do you know that the Rod and Gun Club had done, you know, work in that area and it, I think it more revolves around the CP lands than, you know, this section. Certainly when we replace the bridge slash culvert at, on Baker Street, that has all been restored to proper fish habitat. So when we're doing those projects, we've incorporated that in and, and you know, I think that's pretty well a requirement these days to, you know, to look at those if, if you're doing that. these days to, you know, to look at those if if you're doing that. I don't know how that, it might trigger it when we have to replace that, you know, that bridge across the um, the creek. Um, and I know the other aspect of it is the flooding side of it is, you know, that is the one advantage of having that concrete um, channel is it moves water much quicker than than traditional. So, but uh, we can find out what we have. I know when I first started here, I was on the um, waterfront committee and yeah, pathway committee and and we spent a great deal of time. And there was a real champion at um, Rod and Gun. They've just, you know, the place they keep, you know, not being able to make any progress, even though they've proposed projects, et cetera, is CP. And then certainly we've had many conversations with them about.
Yeah.
About that, but.
There was a, there was a study done um, probably about seven or eight years ago, and it should be here somewhere, but.
Yeah.
Full length of that creek would needed to happen to get some kind of restoration on it. It's never been off the radar really for most people and has come up with almost every council, I think, Janice that I can remember.
No.
But you have two main barriers there. You have um, private land holdings that are straddling the creek and you have private land holdings that are right on the edge of it that that um, it it wouldn't be an easy task, but it's always been on the radar. It's never been off the radar as far as grabbing little pieces of it when you can. And it was always a topic of conversation with Canadian Pacific. It was on every agenda that I ever met with them on, I don't know.
So we'll um, try to figure out what we have and um, recirculate it and then then we can have some further conversation if we need to.
Rod and Gun Club's working on a project right now.
Okay.
The lower part of the creek, down down by the school board office there. So they're, they made made an application for a grant, I think for about forty thousand dollars to do some work down in there.
Sorry, where?
Uh, where it's.
Where it's.
Close.
Yard is and the city works yard is.
Right.
Thanks, Counselor Page. Yeah, we dig out what we can for that. Sebastian, thanks very much. I always get a kick out of planners when they do these do these uh, little maps there and they make buildings look like they're not even there. Like roofs and stuff. Yeah, I know.
The footprint is accurate.
Um.
It's a gesture.
I know that you're probably way down the road on the washroom thing, but um, I'm just wondering, why is it not the same as the ones we've been building in other parts of the community?
Um.
Just curious.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I th- I think the idea here was we wanted something a bit bigger and it included the concession stand. It also included includes a storage room for the market.
Okay, fair enough. I wasn't sure why.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Those are just really just a washroom. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, Sebastian. Once again, another good presentation from Planning Department and keep up the good work.
Yeah, we'll keep you up to date as we progress on these projects.
Okay, thank you. And uh, I'd like a motion to move receipt of the presentation from Sebastian, please. Counselor Renwick, Counselor Charwood, all in favor? Carry it. Um, anything else? Reports of any kind? Delayed items there are none? Counselor Renwick?
I've just got one quick thing. Um, just to bring, make everybody aware, I had uh, dinner the other night with Pam and Len, and today is Len's fortieth anniversary of being a professional fighter fighter.
Wow.
Forty years.
Forty.
So you could send him a text or an email or whatever, but uh, that's a pretty huge accomplishment, forty years, so just thought I'd let you know.
And he's only forty-two.
A little toy truck. Thanks, uh, thanks, Cal. Delayed items there are none? A resolution?
Uh, council report.
Pardon?
Council reports?
Yeah, I said that. You have one? That was one of them. You haven't one? Okay.
Go. Uh, I got, I've got a little bit of a laundry list here. So we already heard uh, from the N A E D P that we had our strategic uh, visioning session for the next year or so. So workforce, workforce shortages, affordable housing came up, resilience in in the context of not just COVID resilience, but climate resilience, business resilience, um, all those ways that we need to be more flexible and and prepare for the the community and the and the challenges that we we face on an ongoing business, ongoing basis. Um, at the library, we also went through our strategic planning session, which is a multi-year process or every mo- every couple of years. So had a relook at what the values are. And we had a lot of discussion, I I think that was good, about the difference between um, having values, setting them and communicating them out to the community versus trying to understand what the community's values were and reflecting them back at our strategic planning. So that was, that was a lot of what was going on at the library. And we're continuing to deliver services. Numbers are up across the board, obviously from a very uh, uh, suppressed level, but people are back in, people are lending, people are using the digital catalog a lot more than they used to. Um, and the final thing, and I I don't know if the Civic is going to continue doing this, but uh, they've been doing a truth and reconciliation film series. They've had a number of pieces over the last few weeks that are that that have been really good. And me and Nick have tuned into a couple of them and gone down and and that that space is obviously really open. Uh, and it opens, it's really eye-opening to to see these content, these indigenous content creators tell their story. Stuff we wouldn't ne- necessarily have been introduced otherwise, but the the curated uh, list that the Civic has been putting together has been really, really excellent. And that's the past. And going into the future, uh, tomorrow, of course, we have our Recommission Five meeting. Uh, we'll be taking a delegation from the Nelson Minor Hockey, uh, and we look forward to that and hearing from them as well as getting budgetary updates and and understanding, uh, as we have all heard, as my colleagues have heard, uh, that the struggles that the N D C C continues to go through, having to be one of those places, uh, much much like hospitality, that it's really been impacted by COVID. It's very difficult to deliver services for the community, uh, given the current public health orders. And it's, it's, you know, staff and staff have been working really, really hard there. Uh, and we really want to appreciate them, but that facility is open. Those uh, services are available. You don't even need to show your passport to go, or don't, you don't need to be vaccinated to go use the pool for people who want to get out and do things. That's not one of the spaces that's been covered. And the A K B L G Board will be in town on Friday, and we will be having our normal meeting uh, to plan for what will we go on with convention.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you. And I I keep, uh, tomorrow when you're speaking with the, at the Recommission, I think they're doing an exceptionally good job down there. I've been down there a lot because I have five kids and can skate and minor grandchildren and minor hockey and and uh, can skate, and they've been doing exceptionally good job in handling uh, handling the facility, so.
For sure.
Counselor Charwood, and who else have their hand up? Counselor Morrison?
No vaccine required for the pool?
Pool has not been, if you've checked, yeah, if you check the the list, it's it's, you don't need to be vaccinated to use the pool. It hasn't been a vector of infection. It must be all the chlorine.
Right? I guess. I mean, fair enough. I just hadn't realized that. I'm not sure the general population of Nelson understands that because it's sort of been seen as like a full.
Yeah.
Experience, so.
I I think, I think what's important is what has happened a lot in our community, and I I want to remind everyone is it's become very easy to get very binary on what is and what isn't. And and that's not the case. Like, I think if anything, this is an example of of how, wherever possible, the people and staff and local government have been looking for narrow solutions that are evidence-based, that achieve exactly what they're trying to do, which in this case is not have spread. And pools have been one of those places where there hasn't been spread, they haven't seen spread. And so it's not one of those places where those requirements are actually in place. And that's because as much as possible, everyone is trying to have a light hand. Uh, it's just a really heavy situation.
But get vaccinated.
But get vaccinated.
Of course. But take care of yourself, too.
Counselor Morrison, are you okay?
I'm good, thank you. Yeah, so they just, they still, you still have to book at, you get it fifty minutes to swim and then.
No, I know.
Yeah.
And you have to, and you have to be out. So, um, just a couple of things from the
last uh, Regional District Board meeting. So um, I'm disappointed to have to report that the uh, Valid um, Rezone failed um, in the Regional District. So that was uh, disappointing uh, news to have to bring back uh, from the economic development um, front. Um, we were all together in terms of um, you know, asking me to go forward and to support that. And I was more than willing to support uh, this economic opportunity, but um, it it failed. So now we'll have to wait and see um, what uh, Valid and the proponent uh, may decide to to do uh, read the future. Uh, also at the last meeting, there was a initial discussion on recycling. We've been asking for a number of years here at the City of Nelson for numbers on recycling and utilization of recycling. We got the first uh, full year of numbers in from the Regional District now being part of Recycle um, B C. I know that uh, as a council, one of our working um, projects coming up will be looking at resource recovery. And so um, I'll make sure that to share that document. It is a public document, so you can all go on the R D site. It wasn't uh, in camera. I think it was a public document. Um, I'll be sure to share that with staff so that when they're doing their prep work um, coming forward, that we can uh, see those numbers. Uh, no surprise at all is that the Central Resource uh, Committee has the highest costs for recycling compared to the East Subregion or the West Subregion. Um, it's, it it somehow ceases to amaze me how we always have the most expensive costs. Um, but it's an interesting report for an initial report. I think that uh, my advice when the report came out was that to, you know, do some work with the City of Nelson. There's some comparable numbers that they'd like to see in terms of our curbside recycling. And I think that we need to share um, all of that that information so we can get a full flushed-out picture of 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 what is what is going on. Um.
Should they not have have that? Because we tip uh, into their bins.
Yeah, I think I I they, I think they have some concerns about some other costing. So I mean, I'm not that, I'm not the staff specialist in that area, so I wasn't gonna second guess what they might have been looking for. So hopefully there can be some um, uh, some discussions on on that. And uh, so and so we had, and that was presented to us at our Central Resource Recovery Meeting that we had um, last week, which was the first one that we'd had since April um, of this of this year. So we don't meet as the subregional resource committees very often, but the next Central Resource um, meeting is scheduled currently for the end of November and it will be the beginning of the uh, budgetary look for uh, twenty twenty-two. That'll be our first look at it and then probably looking at at numbers and and having additional meetings in January and potentially February, keeping in mind that the Regional District has to submit their budget um, in March, so considerably earlier than we, than our requirements here in the city. And so I always leave it up to Director Beck, Director Commissioner, but City Counselor Page to report that it, that we will be starting probably if not tomorrow, the next meeting in November, uh, the look at the budget for the recreational services.
Yep.
Which is another one of our large cost drivers here in the City of Nelson.
What she said.
Can I just ask, where are they in terms of meeting their commitment on uh, looking at how much the City of Nelson should be paying into that central recycling um, part of that service because we run our own recycling program?
Well, I I that that was um, that was brought up in the discussion in terms of the fact that I asked that question about the report in terms of can can you tell us? Because we've asked numerous times. And there was support around the table. There was directors that acknowledged that the question had been asked by Nelson, probably going back to at least um, twenty fourteen, when one of the first uh, letters was uh, written at that time from uh, uh, Mayor Kozak uh, to the Board Chair in regards to looking at our costs when they weren't in Recycle B C. And they've, they've not come to a solution on how to look at, how to determine who takes their recycling and that that's a city resident that has curbside and is driving it to one of the um, core depots or one of the satellite depots. And it's trying to figure out how one can do that job. Because I just don't think you can drive up and ask, where do you live? Because I can tell you, the majority of people would say, I live in Nelson. I'm su- I'm sure that, you know, if Counselor Lockenberg's asked, he doesn't say, oh, well, I'm, I live in up on Hettle Road. I mean, like, he's gonna say, I live in Nelson. It's it's what we all do. So it's hard to distinguish that. So they don't have a mechanism in place for that. But I asked the question again because that question has not been answered yet in the last six years.
More than a question, it's a commitment to.
Figure out a way to look at it.
Put funding aside.
Yeah.
Made this request and it's supposed to be refunded to the city as well as our, what we're contributing to the recycling produce.
One of the things that I thought that was um, potentially positive was and was supported by a a number of people at our um, Central Resource Recovery Meeting was the idea that recycling should be considered perhaps as a single service and not broken out into um, subregions so that there would be an equalization of of cost and some of the cost drivers. So that is um, going to be an ongoing conversation that will be held. And that was the direction um, of the resolutions that we voted on was to to be starting, looking at what that that would look like. And hopefully that staff can give us a report back in time for budgetary considerations going um, forward. So that was, I thought, a really positive thing to finally look at, trying to get rid of all of these um, subregional applications. Now, somebody did ask if we could throw the H B tailings pond in there as well, but that was turned down with a smile. But it was just about um, recycling, recycling's a program that's just been started in terms of the joining of the of the R D to the um, Recycle B C. So I think it would be an easy one that could be um, that that subregional thing could be eliminated and it could be, you know, the Regional District recycling program. And uh, so a step in the right direction.
Yeah. And again, it it would have to account for, you know, the municipalities that have curbside, right?
Yes. And so Mayor Hewitt was very, Ma- Mayor Hewitt wanted the answer to the same question that we have, we had posed all those years ago. She said, this is, this has been a question on the table. The City of Caslow would also like to know, know the answer to this. So so these are ongoing things and I think people are realizing. And and if it was to go um, regional, I'm sure uh, Castlegar isn't in central waste there and west waste. So I'm sure Castlegar would have the same um, concerns that we do get, given that they have a curbside recycling program, so.
So on the first question, Kevin, so we did ask them to formally respond to us, right?
Yeah.
So.
And basically their response was they're waiting for this data. So if they have this data now and um, you know, we make estimations and allocations all the time. So, you know, whether it's, so I'll I'll talk to maybe Stuart and, you know, I think you've come up with a reasonable formula. If you say we're gonna attribute all the recycling per capita, so, you know, take our population, you know, times the um, per capita amount and and apply it to everybody and, you know, here's what we collect less.
Yeah.
Uh, what our share of this is. And I think councils all along said, you know, we're certainly willing to pay our share. That's going directly to the um, to the depots. Um, but we don't want to pay for that plus uh, what we're collecting at curbside.
So when did you say the next meeting was, Janice?
Oh, the next, the next Central Resource Recovery Meeting is until the end of November.
Right. So Kevin, if you could find out in the meantime, and if you don't get satisfaction, then Janice will probably put that on the agenda for the next meeting and try and get an answer. Because uh, you know, our, our partnership with the Regional District is that their their resources are our resources when it comes to answering your questions at the table, right? So there's, so we we should get the same response from them as we would when we ask Kevin or Colin to do something for us or Sarah. And you have a request to some information back from their staff to you, you know, it should come back.
So they did, so now now everybody knows what I know from from that 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 meeting. So I think it's uh, important for staff to probably have some um, discussion back and forth just about what numbers they felt that they didn't have that 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 they think. I mean, maybe we don't even have the numbers that they think, just like, they don't have the numbers that we think they should have, right? It's, so hopefully some conversation can flush it out. Because sometimes it's like, I feel like there's two different languages sometimes. And there is, there's the municipal language and there's the Regional District language. So hopefully we can find a common ground and continue to move forward. Hopefully we can find a common ground and continue to move forward, because I I do feel this is a po- this is the most positive I've felt in a long time. Um, coming out of a a joint, out of out of a Central Resource Recovery meeting in terms of the discussion around the recycling.
Thank you, thanks, Council Morrison, thanks, everybody, Sarah, Kevin, Colin, Scott. Sebastian, thank you very much, and with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn, please. Council Lockenberg and Council Renwick, all in favor? Carry it, thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you, John, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Kevin.